Welcome, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, April 27th, 7 o'clock PM. This is Independent School District 832, the Mod Ameida School District. I'd like to, we do not, we did not have any comments to the board tonight, so we will go ahead and start. Please join me, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval, roll call of attendance, please. Approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to have the agenda be with flexibility. I'll just make that motion. I ask for approval of the agenda with flexibility.
Second.
Second, move by the chair, seconded by Director Donna. All those in favor or any discussion? I'll just point out, I'm only doing it because we want to move an action item up, so our representative from elders can go a little sooner on the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Toman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, presentations. I think we have a presentation from our May Fund a Need, Jess Doman. Come on up. Yes.
Of May, we'd like to present the Mod Ameida School District with a check for $70,000 for literacy libraries in the classrooms at Wildwood Elementary. Literacy libraries will, are resource that are being used along with the letters training that the staff, the teachers have been receiving at Wildwood Elementary. Literacy libraries are portable readers. That's how not only all students, but students with reading challenges. So on behalf of May.
Oh, that's great. Now, we're gonna come join you.
Come around, thank you.
And if I could, I could, I'll just also mention it's for literacy libraries and also to continue the teacher training that we've begun and into our older grades as well. So, thank you. Right, that's exciting. So next, we have a middle school staff recognition. So I'd like to ask Associate Principal Jackie Collins up.
Hey Donna, this is Alina Merrick, and she's her first year at the middle school and is working with our sixth graders specifically, but does many things for us throughout the building as well. And it is an honor to acknowledge her tonight.
Asking for a slideshow.
Yeah, thanks, okay. On March 24th, we had a career day that like no other. It was wonderful. We had over 40 adults come and speak to students who are in sixth grade. And Alina took this by the way, and she led this initiative, and it was wonderful. If we continue through some of the slides, just some of the pictures of the day, as well as the stats that go with what she organized and put together. We were just chatting and we believe this planning started in late November, early December, contacting volunteers that would be interested in coming and sharing their expertise and their careers with this school. Throughout the course of the afternoon, students were, went to three different presentations, different careers that they were interested in, and listened to speakers present on their career for approximately 25 minutes. Time for students to ask questions and learn about different opportunities for them in the future.
Is it, do we want to just, that was everything? Okay.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
Thank you. I think, well, I'll jump in first. I think there were several of us there, and I was there. I thought it was excellent. And the thing I noticed is you had really helped the parents prepare for how to speak to middle schoolers. So, great job on that. I was really impressed. I knew some of the parents who were presenting. I know that they did not know those things on their own, so I know that you did a lot of prep work to help them. I thought the questions you helped or the ideas you helped them think through in what they would be sharing, I noticed that theme in each room I was in, and I thought it was really excellent. And I also want to commend our community for the, I was shocked to see 40 parents in attendance, and I thought that was a great sign too. Other comments? Director Doman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I had an opportunity to attend as well, and really incredible that you were able to pull that many parents together with such a diverse background. My main takeaway, like, not only was it really cool to see our community kind of step up and share their experiences, but it was incredible to see the kids, how tuned in to the speakers they were, like, they were like, super interested. And maybe I just think back to when I was in middle school, I probably didn't pay attention as much as I should have, but the kids were really excited and interested in it. It was really cool. So, great job. Thank you so much.
Director Donna.
I wasn't able to attend, but just the broad array of different speakers is impressive, because you never know what might ignite something, you know, inside of somebody. So it's great to have just a spectrum, a broad spectrum. So, thank you for doing that.
I have to follow up, and we have done played a survey of the different stakeholders that there's high interest in. To have something for the student. Want to finish on that, to cover parts of the different.
Director Regan.
I just wanted to also kind of, yes, Sam, that to get kids thinking about what they're going to possibly do as a middle school student is so powerful. I can tell you, I made it all the way through middle school, high school, and college and thought, gosh, what do I want to do? And so exposing students early to this, I think, is fantastic. The opportunity for them to see a lot of different possibilities and probably know some of the parents that they were seeing speak in kind of a different light, because maybe they only know them as, you know, my friend's parent, or I see them at a soccer game or whatever. And so I think that was just an amazing opportunity and bring that learning kind of real world full circle for them. So, thank you.
Director Peterson.
I got a kick out of the kids really liked the connection when the presenter said, and I sat right here in this room as well. If an alumni was speaking, the kids really thought, you do this and you were here, so that generational visual.
Director Payne.
Thank you so much for your work. This is really important for our students because of the tie between career and academics, and the timing is ideal, because if we wait to high school to expose them to careers and the need for additional education or the importance of the high school education in their career pathway, if we wait till high school, sometimes it's too late. They make choices in their course selection as freshmen that can influence, you know, up through their college choices. So I really appreciate the fact that you understand how important it is at this age to have those conversations, and even though they don't stay with those careers that were presented to them, but they start to understand that connection between their education, their academics, and their future. That's really important. Thank you so much.
It's Kaya.
Just want to say, I'm super jealous. Just out on that, because that sounds amazing. And to go off of what you said too, I think so many students at the high school love their PSEO classes, but we kind of have an issue where a lot of students don't know what they would want to take PSEO classes in, so they may be kind of avoid it. So something like that would be so beneficial for students to do in middle school before coming to the high school, so they would know what kind of PSEO classes they could take. So then more students would have that opportunity, which would be so great. So I'm really happy that you're planning on continuing it for the future.
I, I want to second that, that I was really happy that it was such a success, and you're going to jump from there.
And so I also want to just echo all the thanks. If I'm not mistaken, this has not, a career day has not been done in, heard over 20 years, if not longer. Am I right about that? Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought that's what he had told me. So, so thank you again for all your work and for bringing your enthusiasm for that. I mean, that was a huge undertaking, and it seemed to me that the teachers were having fun, parents and students. I saw everyone having a great time with it because of how well organized it was and how well thought out it was about the group of, you know, the audience you had really planned for the audience. So, thank you for that. We really appreciate it. Yeah. So this is the point where we all stand over there on the blue tape and take a picture with you. So we'll, we'll do that together now.
Okay, and now Kaya, you're up for our Student Representative Report.
Um, quite a few things this meeting. So the first thing I want to start off with is the SpongeBob musical, because that's this weekend. The first one is tonight. It's happening right now. It started at 7:00. And then also Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 7:00, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. And if you want to buy tickets for that, you can find it on zephyr fine arts dot ludus, L U D U S dot com. I'm saying that because some of my friends had a hard time finding it. So I wanted to put it out there into the community. The other thing is this week at the high school has been Mental Health Week, which is a pretty big deal for the students at the high school, because we get to do this really cool speaker event, which happened yesterday, on Wednesday. So three students from the high school, two seniors and one sophomore, volunteered to talk about their own experiences with mental health, which is so impressive and so meaningful for us to hear, not only because students relate to it, or they can understand what other students might be going through, but also just find some bravery for themselves to speak up about what they've been experiencing too. So all around, it's an amazing event. I think maybe 200 people decided to come this year because it is an opt-in event. And then we also had one alumni speaker. So that was an exciting thing to happen at the high school. I think a lot of people really benefited from that. And then we do little debriefing circles afterwards, ran by a staff member to kind of talk through, because a lot of the topics are pretty heavy, so. And then another part of Mental Health Week is, SLC has organized some flex time events, such as doing yoga, meditation, coloring, seeing the therapy dog Brewster. So students have been getting into that. And also, we have made a I am affirmation poster at the school, so kind of says, I am kind, I am strong, things like that, to kind of get students thinking about those things. Some things coming up next week is this first week of AP testing. So a lot of classes have been preparing for that. Students are doing a lot of studying, and then the following week is also AP testing. And on top of AP testing is prom, which is for the juniors and seniors, is not this weekend, but the following weekend. So we've been getting ready for Night in New York was the theme this year, and SLC has been doing Grand March. Monday is also Decision Day for the seniors. So at school, you'll see all of the seniors wearing either college or different program that they're doing after high school. So that's fun for everyone to get to see what their peers are doing next year. And then, spring sports are in full swing of the sports. If you're interested in going to a game, you could find all the schedules on GoZephyrs and support athletes at the school, but that's everything.
You want to remind everyone where you're going?
Oh, yeah. I am going to Pitzer College next year. It's, it's one of the Claremont schools in California. It's a liberal arts college, so I'm really excited for that. So I'll be wearing my Pitzer College sweatshirt on Monday. Excited to show everyone.
Hi, and did you want to talk at all about your experience?
Yeah, so last Friday, I went to an event that was organized by MSBA for student representatives on school boards, which was really cool, because it was the first time they've done it. And the two things I kind of wanted to share about was, one, the school we did it at was Columbia Heights. And Columbia Heights has done a lot of environmental projects that they kind of shared with all of us, which I thought was super interesting, and it's something for our school district to think about, because they have a really large garden at their high school, and a lot of the classes will use the garden in their lessons, and they will also have clubs that take care of the garden, summer jobs for students to work in the garden, and also I think they have botany classes that use the garden. So I don't know if that's something we would want to think about in the future, because I know all of their schools use that garden, and it's also used in community outreach. So they have a food little, like a little free library, but with food that comes out of the garden. And I thought that was super cool, something new to our district, so maybe that might be something we'd want to think about in the future to incorporate in our learning. The other part was, we talked about our role as a school board representative, and my main takeaways was, I noticed that a lot of schools had multiple school board reps, whereas our school was in the past only had one. Um, I kind of talked with Saffron about this, and we were thinking there might be some benefits of this. There might be some drawbacks. So I don't know if that was something to consider. From, from my point of view, I think it would be good to collaborate with another student about what I'm bringing forward to the school board, but also I know a lot of times I can't add to things, so that might not be the best use of time for two people. And then also, just the process of becoming a school board member was talked about a lot. The, a lot of the student reps had a different process than us that involved less about SLC, which is a big part of that, our school, and more about meeting with the members of the school board, interviewing, filling out more like questionnaires versus writing a speech. And this is something I've thought about in the past, because I don't really feel like my school as a school board representative is connected to my role on SLC. So, in the future, moving forward, I don't know if we want to separate those two things, or consider a different application process for the student rep, but those are my takeaways from the event. And it was really an amazing event too. So I really enjoyed it and hearing about what everyone else was, what issues were their school boards were faced with and whatnot. So, yeah, I really enjoyed it.
Yes, it sounds like you took away a lot. I think it would be worth having a discussion as a board. Would everybody be on board with that, talking about that, the ideas that Kaya just brought forward, that we can have that at a study session maybe? Director Regan.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you for always speaking your truth. I think it, you represent the students so well. I mean, we're a bunch of adults sitting around here, and we try and make the best decisions we can to support teachers, students, and the community, but to hear your truth, it matters so much. And so, thanks for bringing all the things that you bring, not only the updates of what's happening around the school, the schools, but also just like how the students are feeling and the perceptions. And trust me, I feel like my ears perk up so much every time when you talk, because the, I guess the viewpoint of the student is what matters so much. So thanks for speaking your truth always.
Director Peterson.
Well, Kaya, there's an Eagle Scout currently looking into building a garden for his Eagle Scout project. So, we, we have a small ball rolling, and I hope it just takes off. I have a thousand ideas to keep it going, but.
So impressed, and I know a lot of others.
And you know his sister, so I can talk to you about it sometime.
Now, our superintendent report. Slides to share. Drive it for me if that happens. Okay, so next slide, please. So I will once again show you some things around the district. I will tell you that Kaya hit a number of them already. Graduation rates just came out, so I'll share that with you and just give you a little insight into what they mean and what that looks like for us. Give you a strategic plan update, and then just remind you of some upcoming community engagement events. So around the district, we have a couple of students who were recognized in the Aspirations in Computing National Award, they are National Award honorees, Shana Diwania and Tia Syria. And so this is, I actually, I hadn't known about this award before, and this is, this is pretty, a pretty amazing opportunity for both of them. So beyond the prizes and local media attention, they are also provided access to mentoring, job shadow experiences, and internships. And, and this is specifically to support women in international technology. So that is, that's a great opportunity for both of them. So congratulations. I do hear about the Real World Design Challenge, and they once again won an award at the national competition. They won honorable mention for being a team with a high overall combined score. And they are among the most competitive in the country. So congratulations to Team Zap for their Real World Design Challenge success. We, it seems like a long time ago, because it was right after our last board meeting, that we had the Passages Transition Program or Annual Reverse Job Fair. And this is a favorite event among a lot of us. As you can see, we had a number of us there. And the, the point of this is for our Passages Transition students to be able to practice talking about their job interests and their strengths, and what are the things they need in order to be successful in a, in a job. So, it's a, it's a favorite event for us every year. Have Middle School Career Day on the list, of course, but we've heard quite a bit about that. I will also share with you that Jay Christensen, who is a Mod Ameida High School alum, visited with some high school students for a career presentation, and this is something that has been happening at the high school during flex time and different, different communications, they're communications oriented, but, but they are different career presentations that have happened for students during, during flex time at high school. And I, I think it's, it's worth noting the last, the last three stories I'm highlighting here, all related to explorations of careers for students. And that is something that came out of our last strategic plan back in 2019, that we wanted more opportunities for students to explore careers and to look at career pathways. And so I just wanted to highlight that that is something that has, has kind of taken off in our district in large part to that conversation we had during the last strategic planning process. If you haven't seen it, Cooking Club was featured on Twin Cities Live, and a lot, I enjoyed it quite a bit, because the person doing the, doing the reporting was a litter, little overwhelmed by all of the activity in a, of middle school students in a kitchen. So she commented on it repeatedly. So it's, yeah, it's pretty fun. So I hope you'll take time to look at that. The, the newsletter that's, that's highlighted there, there was a story in, was it the district, the district newsletter that we saw information about? So I recommend going back into the district newsletter and looking for some more information about this enrichment newsletter. So it has some, it has, I see that it has spring and summer opportunities in it, but in general, there have been some, some great, great highlights of the work that Laura Enright has been doing with our Gift and Counted programming, and I just recommend taking a look and just kind of diving into that a little bit, because she's done a great job kind of sharing her stories of, of things that she's doing there. Graduation rates came out, and I'll just, we've talked about this before, but I think it's worth noting again, one of the things that we look at is our four-year graduation rate. And it is, it continues to be one of the highest in the state. This year, it looks a little bit lower, and in large part, that's because, or in 2022, we had a higher number of students continuing in the Passages Transitions Program. And so when students continue into passages, they do not count our four-year rate. But we do look, that's why we spend a lot, we emphasize our seven-year rate, because that's the longest students can be with us. And so we want our students to go into passages if that is the appropriate fit for them. And so our four-year graduation rate may, may fluctuate a little bit. We're a small school, and point, we had six, six students go to passages in 2021 and nine in 2022, and that makes a big difference for us in terms of our percentage. So that four-year can, can fluctuate a little bit, but that's why we emphasize the seven-year graduation rate. So I just wanted to mention that. But again, they continue to be some of the, the highest in the state, and we're just very, very proud, as you know, of our Passages Transitions Program, so. Action teams. So what are they currently doing? They are wrapping up their work. So we will be, they, next week is our last week with action planning, and our teams are getting really close. They've written some, some great things for us to consider. And so we will be seeing those sometime soon. We also took stakeholder feedback regarding the, the mission and the, and, and the work that the planning team had done. So on May 10th, we have a group of planning team members, a small group, we're going to take that feedback and take another run at, at a draft of the mission and, and changing the mission. So it honors the intent of the planning team, but it also kind of cleans up some of the language and incorporates some of the feedback we've heard from both the board and the community. So that's coming up soon. And, and then our final meeting with the planning team, where we see the action plans come and look at the mission altogether is in June. I think I just went through all that. Oh, I'm sorry. And there was a link in there that you can. And there was a link in there that you can, um, share your ideas regarding the mission. You can share your ideas with the planning team. So we had a Google form open earlier for people to be able to share ideas with the action teams. And now we also have one that, that, uh, they can share the ideas with the planning team, which is the language of your mission and such. Thank you for going back for me. Upcoming community engagement opportunities, uh, celebrating our staff. There's been a few of these that have come out, a few emails about this. Um, MAF is, is, uh, promoting thanks a latte to be able to celebrate teacher appreciation, appreciation week. And there's also a, an opportunity for you to submit in a Google forum, some thank yous to staff members as well. So I hope people will take advantage of that. Um, and the Zephyr Learning Showcase, the final one of the year is going to be on May 25th. Upcoming school tour dates are also there. So just sign up. And I believe that's everything. Any questions?
Donna.
Barb, would, could you take a minute just to give an overview to the folks watching what the passages program is?
Passages is again, our transition program. So it's for students who, uh, may need some additional support in that transition to, to independent living. So they may be learning some independent living skills. They may be learning some job skills. That's a lot of what we help with and obviously some academic work as well. All of the students who are in our transitions program are on, um, IAPs for special education. So it's a, it's a special education program to support our students in the ways that they need to in order to transition into more of an independent life after school.
Domon.
Um, quick question on strategic planning stuff. I know there's been some schedule conflicts because the groups are pretty big and everyone hasn't been able to attend every one of the meetings. If, if some of the participants have missed one or two of the sessions, are they able to jump back in still at this point?
They have been, yes, they've been coming and going and they've been included on all the emails. So anyone who's been on a, a planning team unless they've told us they're not.
Sure.
Coming back, they've been included on those emails all along so that they, they can read the summary, their minutes and they can, they can keep engaged that way.
So I guess I would just take this opportunity for anybody that's listening online or here in person. Like if you've fallen out, don't, uh, feel like you can't jump back in. Please, please stay involved and, and participate if, if possible.
I just wanted to add too, you pointed out the teacher appreciation week and I'm sure all of you saw my email. All the PTOs are doing things as well. And so we're obviously want to, uh, coordinator on them in, um, how we show our appreciation to all our staff. So, um, well, we're working those details so that it'll be a successful week. Okay, so now we're going to move one action item up. It doesn't look like we have our director of finance.
He's there.
He's always on, online. Oh, I see. Yes. I wondered why his name was up there.
Yeah.
I, so we have our director of finance, Jeff Priest, and also our representative from Ellers.
Okay, um, can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you. Just kind of quiet. You're very quiet back there. Give us, uh, Jeff, Kyle's coming to help.
Okay.
Do you want to try again? I heard him. Oh, he's, he's muted. Yep. Jeff, will you unmute and try again?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're good.
We are. You can kick us off, okay?
Okay, I'll do that. Um, saying, thanks for moving this up on the agenda. Um, but so what we're going to be doing is asking you to, um, approve the resolution authorizing the sale of facility maintenance bonds. And, and just as a reminder, um, the, the proceeds from these bonds will be used, uh, along with our, um, insurance claim to basically re-ruff almost every square foot of, um, rough, just about every roof in the, um, in the district. So, um, Jody's here. I think today we, we, the bids were, uh, received this morning and at the office of Ellers. And Jody Zesba, believe it or not, no stranger to the board. She was probably there a month ago, uh, with the pre-sale report. So Jody, if you want to run through the, the, uh, the sale day report, um, and update the board on the, how the bidding came out.
Great, thanks, Jeff. So the sale day report is being projected and I know you have it in front of you. So I'll just start with a few highlights on the, the next page. All right, so, um, as Jeff mentioned, these are financing your working projects. So we, um, listed as the deferred maintenance projects that are included in your tenure plan that was approved by the commissioner of education. There are two ratings that were assigned to your bond issue. So under the state credit enhancement program, standard of pores assigns their highest rating at a triple A because that's the rating that's assigned to the state of Minnesota. So you get the advantage of that rating. Your underlying rating was affirmed at a double A minus. We did ask about the, um, chances of getting that upgraded. And they told us that there's too many unknowns at this point in time. They did have discussions about it, but with state legislation pending, contract negotiations pending and inflation, um, a little uncertain right now. They said that they just weren't ready to make that, um, change at this point in time, but they did say the trajectory looks good. So we're hanging on to those positive words. Uh, you got seven bids today, which is great. And, um, the low bidder was Bancroft Capital out of Pennsylvania at a 3.3264. The high bid was 3.4673, so pretty tight bidding. In the notes on that page, you'll see that we had estimated a 3.72. So we're under that, which is great. And then we got a lot, a little bit larger premium that we expected. So with those results, we, uh, will have principal and interest costs about $52,000 less than what we were expecting and about $70,000 more for project costs, which Jeff was happy with. So that's good. We'll close on the bonds on May 18th, so that's when you'll have your proceeds. And then you do have a resolution that was, um, completed today by your bond attorney from Dorsey and Whitney. So that is the action item that you'll have. I'll just quickly touch on the attachment. So the first attachment is the bid tab and that lists all of the bids that we received today. So again, Bancroft, the low bidder at 3.33, basically. Hilltop Securities out of Dallas was next, got a very closely behind at a 3.36. Then Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, FHN Capital Markets out of Memphis, Baird out of Milwaukee, Steeple Nicholas out of Birmingham, and then TD Securities at New York was the high bidder at roughly 3.47. So nice to see that many bids, nice to see interest from throughout the country, always like that. Uh, the next schedules then are updates to the schedules that we discussed last month. So this is our sources and uses schedule. Again, you can see we got a little higher premium, a little bit more than deposited to your construction fund on that schedule. Page four is the detailed debt schedule. So Jeff will have to stay till that final payment is made on February 1st of 2038.
Yep.
And then, uh, the next page is attachments, page five at the bottom, if you keep scrolling up. One more page. And this is our schedule that shows your long-term facilities maintenance revenue, which is where the debt service payments are made from. So there's no additional tax increase associated with these bonds. You're paying for, you're making the payments out of revenue that you already received. Um, you do have existing bonds already under this program. You get a decent amount of state aid in this program too, which is great. And then, um, with these new bonds, um, ultimately what we've been keeping our eye on is that far right column, which shows how much you'll still have remaining for other projects each year after making these debt service payments. So you're just a little under $1 million, which is nice to still have that amount of money available. The final attachment then is the rating report that was issued by S and P. So the cover page, and then if you'll go to the next page, I think we'll just point out a few things in that bottom section there, the credit overview, talking about your predominantly residential community. Um, but then in the, um, they talk about the, um, balance results over the last couple of years. And then at the bottom there, in their view, management is forward-thinking and makes good financial policies and practices. So that's nice, which we expect should support financial stability over the medium term. Um, on the next page, they give a few more bullets related specifically to the underlying rating that they assigned. So participation in the broad and diverse twin cities economy, growing reserves that they expect will remain strong over the near term. Good practices and policies again, moderate debt profile and adequately funded pension and post-employment benefit obligations. And then they go into a little bit more detail, but, um, ultimately then on page four, you'll see some key credit metrics too, which they include in the report. So that's everything that's included in the report tonight. And I know you have the resolution in front of you too.
Questions? So, well, thank you. I think we're ready to take a vote on it then. I have a motion for approval of the sale of LFTM.
So.
By Director Donna.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion?
I'd just like to, um, great job by Nance team. Appreciate all the efforts and presentation was very, very well done. So thank you very much.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service. I'm glad everything turned out so well.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move back to item number 10, discussion information items. And we will start with the board member calendar. Anyone have anything they'd like to point out? Yes, Director Peterson.
I don't know if these are the right words, but I would like to move to cancel or move the board meeting that's on the last day of school.
Um. I'm thrown off.
Um, how about?
It's not just my idea.
It's, uh, we're in discussion items, but.
This board calendar?
Yes, I know.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if I said it at the right time. So. I'm kind of blanking right now. Anyone, can I call a friend?
I'm phoning a friend. Um. So, so have you just made a motion? Is that what just happened here?
Is that what we have?
That's like, they just made a motion, then do I have a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
Okay. Second, so moved by Director Peterson, seconded by Director Donna. Uh, discussion, please.
Yes. I, I, I heard that we were concerned about the last day of school being a board meeting. I haven't had an opportunity to look at what it is that we have, that we may need to have discussion about. You, as you know, um, you, we, we don't like to bring an action item to you without having had discussion first. And so one thing we can look at is the possibility of that regular meeting in May. If we have discussion items that we can load up and at the regular meeting in May, we can try and do that. Um, but I also want you to know that that's just a busy time of year and I want to honor your need to have discussion before you vote on something. So I can't, I just would ask you, give us a little bit of time to figure out what we can do as a, as cabinet, we can go through all the things that we need to do and see if we can reorganize. That would be my request on that. If that's, if that's the direction you want to go as.
Director Payne.
I'd like to add that, um, I'm going to be voting no on this motion because of exactly what, um, Miss Dufferin said is that it's not fair to administration to turn to them now at this point and say, oh, let's change a board meeting where there's lots of planning that, that goes with that. I'm also concerned about summer calendars. A lot of us have very packed summer calendars and other things already on calendars. And to change a board meeting at this point in time with it being so close could cause us problems with quorum. And so that concerns me as well with a motion at this late date for an upcoming meeting. And it was like a scare to the community. So I'll be voting no.
Director Regan.
Um, I would love for us to consider this as a discussion topic and, um, but I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. Um, I feel as though this is something that we should consider in the fact of, um, the number of events that are happening that last week of school. Um, and again, without the information of what's on that agenda, um, I will be voting no for this, but I am absolutely in favor of discussion. Um, so we can take a look at what's, where we go next with this. The timing of it is not ideal and I think that, uh, um, yeah, I look forward to the discussion.
I would like to say I do not like having on the last day of school either. And as Leslie knows, I pushed back really hard and we couldn't find a date that worked timing wise. It was just, so finally just decided, because we will have stuff we have to cover. So that's, that's why it, and so it's not ideal. So if we want to have a discussion and we, somebody comes up with a better idea, I'm certainly open to it. So, um, are there other items of discussion or does someone want to table this until we discuss it? What?
Point of order, you can't table a motion that's in process. You can table an agenda item, you can't table a motion once it's active. Um, and may I ask also, if it's voted down, um, can it be brought back later with new information? Or?
No.
Is that how?
I mean, somebody could add it, but we could, you know, I'll make a motion to amend it, to change it to a study session of this rather than voting on changing the actual date. Can I have a second?
Second.
So I, uh, I made a, an amendment to the underlying motion and Director Domon seconded that. Any discussion? Okay, so we will vote on, yes, Director Payne.
Um, I would encourage my fellow board members to vote no on that. It would be easier and cleaner for all of us to vote the motion down and then return to it once there's more information. We do have a standing, um, procedure not to bring things back unless there's new information. So it sounds like Ms. Dufferin said she would find additional information that we were requesting and we could bring it back and be cleaner and easier instead of making it sort of convoluted like that. Um, and it's a item for a future agenda, which would be a discussion between the board chair and the superintendent. And I just think it, it makes it a little bit more complex when it doesn't need to be, when we can simply vote down the motion and then address it, um, through the board chair, which is the responsibility of the chair and the superintendent.
Director Donna.
Don't we get to the same place, either way we go? Right? If we vote it down or if we vote for the amended?
I, I'm not clear on what the amendment is really, so that's the only reason I'm voting no.
Ben Chair, could you please repeat the amendment?
The amendment is to have a discussion item on a future agenda of the June 8th date on the calendar. Any other discussion? Oh, Director Regan.
I am also confused now because with the original motion to vote on we are changing the date of the June 9th meeting, I would be voting no for that because I feel as though I would want us to have a discussion about this. So I don't think we settled that first.
There's an, there's a motion to amend that underlying motion. So my motion is to have a discussion about the June 9th date. If that were to pass, then that would be the motion that we would be voting on. It undoes the underlying provision at that point because it's been amended. So we have to vote on the amendment to the underlying motion and then we vote on the underlying motion. Or we can, oh, anyway, I already made it, I already made it and it started in the second, so we have to vote on it. Any other discussion?
Hi.
Yes, Director Domon.
Just to make sure I'm comprehending what we're discussing right now. Is the amendment for us to have this discussion at the study session on May 8th to then be able to vote on this at the May board meeting about rescheduling?
Yes. Recommendation, may, may recommend that you, um, that you just, if you vote down both, you and I can, um, have a discussion about adding this conversation to the next, the study session. And then, um, I'll bring back more information to you at that point. And then I'll bring back more information to you at that point. We'll have an opportunity to go through a few things and then we can bring, I can bring that back to you and we can see if we can organize it.
And we don't have to, we, we don't have to vote on that, that night, that night. Because then we can just make it part of the next regular board meeting to vote on it, to change the calendar.
Yep, yep, that would be fine, but we can have a discussion about it at our next study session. I'll add it to the study session.
Okay, Director Payne.
Thank you, Miss Dufferin, for clarifying the motions and opinions. I was trying to say at the table, you stated it much more clearly, but that is the reason for the two negative votes I will be making on the amendment and the motion.
It'll probably just be a little bit, then I'll, I'll figure, I'll help figure it out and then bring it back. Okay? Does that work?
Is everyone okay with that?
Now you have to, you still have to vote though.
So now, all those in favor of the amendment, the underlying motion, please say aye. Nay.
Nay.
The under, the amendment fails. All, or, yeah.
Yeah.
And now we will vote on the underlying motion. All those in favor of the underlying motion, please say aye. All those opposed?
Nay. Okay, and I will just, I'll just bring that back. I'll look at it with cabinet. We'll figure that out.
Okay, that was good exercise. I haven't done that in a while. Okay, next. But thank you, Director Peterson. We can address that going forward. Okay, uh, that was the board member calendar.
Madam Chair, I have my hand up for the calendar before that motion. May I continue?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I have my hand up to.
Oh, yes, Director Payne, we are still on board member calendar. Yes, thank you.
So you'll notice on the board member calendar in late May, I think it's May 26th, there is an additional AMSD meetings, additional meeting that AMSD puts on every May, late May for board members to do a summary of the legislative session. And so it is a very good meeting to come and attend to hear about the summary of impact of the session on our district. So please make note that if you can attend, that would be fabulous.
Are there any other dates that board members would like to point out? Okay. Okay. Um, the next is our teaching and learning newsletter. Dr. Reichel.
So as Dr. Reichel comes up to the podium, I do want to just remind everyone where this all began, and it began with our, our board goals, our board and superintendent goals to talk about how it is that we use data beyond what we'll hear about as satellite data. Had a lot of conversations about what data we use in the district and the board was interested in learning more about what data we use and how we use it and how we interpret it. So this has been, this has been work, ongoing work for us to, to kind of bring it all together in a way that we can communicate to those people who aren't using the data day, day to day, how it is that we do that. So, uh, Dr. Reichel's put in a lot of work to, to kind of assemble this teaching and learning newsletter. You gave us some feedback at our last meeting about her draft of the teaching and learning newsletter. She's incorporated that. I'd also want to just remind you that this is something new that we're doing. It's a work in progress. So, and there'll be an opportunity for us to continue to build this newsletter and have different, different items and different different, different newsletters. So I just, I want to just put that all out there as the reason behind this. And thank you again for all your work on this. There are a number of late nights when she was here trying to get things to work in here. And, and I appreciate all your work here, and I hope that this can be an ongoing conversation with the board about how it is we use data. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks for having me tonight. So really, as I think about being able to share with you this inaugural version of the teaching and learning newsletter, I have two lenses. First is to make sure that I walk through what's in this newsletter. Parallel to that, I'm really seeking your feedback on two things. One, what's some additional data that you're hoping to see in the next iteration? And secondly, what are some topics in here that might be a good fit for a study session so we can dig more deeply into what does that data mean? Make sense? All right. So the first page is the first page. Oh, and before I be, before I get in, I just need to extend a heartfelt and deep gratitude to Alice Soifert, who was my partner in crime in creating this and being able to share it with you. Thanks, Alice. All right. So in here, our first page, who can we zoom in on this? That's, that's a little tiny for most of us who have eyeballs that need to see what's on more clearer. Okay, well, well, then maybe you all have it on your screens. So our, our backup, our introductory page begins with that spotlight. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure happened in that spotlight is that we were truly responding to things that we were hearing in our community. And as part of the strategic planning, um, a few weeks ago, there was an opportunity to gather and share data. And one of the pieces of data that was asked for by a number of different groups was related to the US News and World Report ranking system. And so there was work on behalf of some district leaders to put together a one pager that explained what it is that makes up that US News and World Report. There's a lot of different information on the top of that page. And the one thing that I would like to make sure that we dig into is in that good to know section where you see the light bulb off to the side. Um, when we look at what the US News and World Report does is it looks at a variety of indicators. And one of the highest important ranking areas is based on the number of students who took and passed advanced placement or international baccalaureate exams. In our district, we offer AP and we have great success with AP. And one of the things that our community may not know is that students who participate in college in the schools or PSEO, two additional avenues for rigorous course opportunities, they're not counted in this US News and World Report because those are not available in every state across the nation. And so when we look at those rankings, because we choose to say there are so many different options for kids to pursue rigorous course opportunities, um, that might be a, a, a way to tip the scales in differently than some other districts. On this page, um, at the bottom, I will continue to have a demographics at a glance. This is our student body population, both in the demographics of, as it relates to race and then those other populations free and reduced lunch, English learners and students with an IEP. On the right-hand side, I will keep you updated in our quarterly-ish newsletters of what our enrollment is across the district and in each of our schools or sites. And then we decided based on some conversations that we were hearing in the strategic planning action team groups is that it would be helpful to share some of the staff expertise in addition to our student body. And I think we intuitively know that we have staff who come here and they stay here because it's a great place to be. And it's really important to be able to show that beyond that intuition that most of our teachers stay here and, and we're really thankful for that. Any questions for me on page one?
Don't you want to press a little button in the corner?
Oh, well, I can. You're just going to hear me talk. So on several of the pages, you'll see this icon and you'll be able to hear an audio of me giving you on this page, a tour of the entire newsletter. And then on each of the separate sections, it goes a little bit more in depth as to what those data sources mean. Do you want to hear the audio?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Let's just hear a little.
Welcome to the teaching and learning newsletter. This is Dr. Jennifer Reichel, and I serve as the Director of Teaching and Learning for the Matamita Public School District. We know how important it is to keep our families and community informed about the important work we're doing in our classrooms every day, which is why we've initiated this quarterly teaching and learning newsletter. This introductory page audio intends to give you a tour of what you'll see on the following pages.
So for those people who want a little bit more, there's some audio in there for you.
Director Regan really likes that. So can I, yes, and again, her, I know we talked about this in the study session and to me, this is first of all, the visual Alice, this is amazing. I mean, the, the partnership between the two of you, it's just, it's beautiful. It's clean. I love the multimodal. So the other pages have some video and some audio and there's also text and there's charts. And so I think visually it's fantastic and it reaches different learners in different ways by having different modalities. So I know that was something I asked her. So thank you for considering that. I love it.
And our intention is to do a little bit more. I think that there were a few of you who were surprised when I said, well, I'll be back at the next board meeting. I don't think I realized what a heavy lift this was going to be. So I'm excited that there will be so much time between this one and the next one in order to do a little bit more. Yeah. All right. Any questions or feedback or thoughts about that first page?
Stay there for one second. I only thought of this because Superintendent Dufferin, you explained our graduation rates because we're so small can fluctuate a whole percentage point. So my, does does every statistic we see in here include the preschool at Wildwood and Passages? Or is this K-12?
Um, I, it will indicate in most cases, it's K-12. I did not include pre-K in our enrollment. I don't think most of the data that we collect is not germane to either pre-K or passages.
Okay.
Yep.
And I will say that district-wide part, that 31, that's K-12. Just so you, when I looked at that number.
Okay. I did a, okay, yep.
You know, it has passed. I, I'll show you. Sorry.
I did a little tweaking of that.
Okay.
Said, because I got information from Bonnie and then I.
Okay, sorry. All right, sorry.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to move on to the next page. Um, one of the things that you suggested, and I love the suggestion, was that we start with that street level data to begin with. And so there is an introduction up at the top that we enhanced a little bit between the last time you saw the draft template and this. And then an additional audio that talks about that street level data. And we were able to highlight at Wildwood Elementary, really just the idea of how we're focusing in on our literacy instruction and how we use data in classroom, in the classroom setting. At OH, we went specific to a teacher and talked about one of our teachers who uses a resource that we have in our district called Go, Go Formative, which is a quick opportunity to do a virtual check-in with students. And then teachers can make immediate adjustments in their instruction based on the data they collect. And Alice helped us out by gathering some video and I will upplay a little bit of that video. Oh, I think it, there's no voice, right? It's just, yep, it's, it'll show you some pictures and there's some text underneath that when you have a chance to look at it on a screen that's a little bit bigger, you'll be able to make that connection. And then we move into Matamita Middle School where we take, where we go into learning about an interdisciplinary project between history and English language arts and the kinds of data that they're collecting in order to inform instruction. Um, and those things that, like I shared the last time I was here, this street level data really is how our teachers make sense of how kids are learning and growing in their classrooms. And it's really hard to make quantitative across the system because it might be a check-in in the classroom. It might be a thumbs up, thumbs down, and those are not things that we're going to put in charts and graphs. And if we did, you would have millions of them because every day we're doing some form of formative or summative assessment. And then the final piece of street data that we shared with you is a social studies project that's happening at the high school and how they are using the process of doing this project to gather data throughout in order to inform how they support students. What questions, wonders, or ideas do you have about street level data?
Uh, just question, I guess, out of curiosity, how do you decide which thing you're going to highlight, what you're going to highlight? Is there a submission process or how does that work?
So for this particular one, really, it was a tap on the shoulder of our principals to say, what do you have that you know about right now? And we are already building a list of what we want to highlight in future issues. So at some point, you will see from our Wildwood and/or OH, how they do their data days, they gather teachers and how they're going through that information in order to make next steps. Um, when there are really exciting things because our principals are in the classrooms very frequently, they know who's collecting that data. We're trying not to highlight those, I would say, super sparkly projects because street level data is the bread and butter of what we do in our classrooms. And this is the opportunity for you all to have a glimpse of the student experience on those not super fantastic days, although every day is super fantastic. Yep. You know, I was going to say, all right, right? Yes. But those project days that I think who often get tapped on the shoulder to say, come see this exceptional experience, these day-to-day things are what's happening. All right. Anyone else? All right, then I'm going to move along. Um, one of the things that we talked about the last time that I was here about the map level data, I had a number of different pieces of information that we talked about putting in here. And it became clear to me that if I was going to make this a succinct newsletter, that I couldn't add all of the information in a way that was digestible. And so what I decided instead was to focus on one area particularly at our elementary schools so that you can see here are two different ways that we can review our data that help us make to make programming decisions. So in both Wildwood and OH, what you'll see on the left-hand side is our fall screening data. In K, in grade kindergarten and grade one, they do an assessment called early reading. And then in grade two, they begin what's called a reading, and that runs us through grade five. So those are the data points that we gather in the fall of the school year that helps teachers to recognize, all right, here's, here's what at a glance my students may need or where they may be excelling. And then, um, the internal data or like I've shared before, our screening data then prompts us for some kids to move into diagnostic data that gives us more specific where are those gap closing um, pieces that we need to focus on. And then on the right-hand side, what you'll see is the growth that children have made looking, comparing our fall data to our winter data with those same assessments. And so I've tried to use colors that are similar to what you'll see in the next section, the satellite data that mimics the MCA colors. But when we look at those four levels of growth, um, we really like to be in the green and the dark blue. Green is typical growth and that dark blue is what's called aggressive growth. And that's what we would categorize as gap closing growth. So for those students who come in with some skill improvement needs, that dark blue line is how they make progress toward that grade level proficiency more than what our grade level kiddos might need. Our lightish blue and our gray are are modest growth and flat growth. We don't measure like the subtraction of growth because school is not going to extract knowledge from children. So that's why it's flat growth and those particular labels come from the Fastbridge assessment, assessment system, which is where this data came from. In addition to those graphs, I've also included some text that helps to explain what those two things mean so that folks who aren't in the classroom on a day-to-day basis, who use this data all the time, have a better understanding of what this might mean. And I've also included on the bottom of both Wildwoods and OH's graphs, our attendance data, which at those two schools, we're doing. our attendance data, which, those two schools are doing great.
Director again.
So I think this, again, is a really great visual. And I, my interpretation of this, again, so I'm asking if I'm interpreting it correctly. When I look at the winter literacy growth for grade two, we have 80% of our kids at either that typical or aggressive growth. Those are the kids that started their educational experience during COVID. And so that, when I saw that, when you first shared that, that was like the first thing that stuck out to me. Am I interpreting that right? Because I was like, wow, that's, that looks like great growth for that group that had to start learning in a sort of quite disruptive way.
Yep, you've got it exactly right.
Director, um, could you help me understand the graphic on the left?
Yeah. So when we look, and I'll use Wildwood, for example, because OH is the same graphic, just a different children. So on the left, we see at the top that kindergarten, early reading, fall. So all of our children in the beginning of the school year, in the first month or so, take an assessment that's called the early reading assessment through the FastBridge tool. And what those bars tell you is coming into the grade level, who has, at that moment in time, mastered the skills? As we think about, particularly in kindergarten, the skill, the skill set needs change because the development and the reading growth of kindergarteners change significantly over the course of the school year. And so in the fall, there's a set of, here's what we're looking at. And in the winter, it's slightly different. And then in the spring, it's slightly different. First grade, there's a minimal change. And then beginning in second grade, we don't see a change in what the expectations are, what they're being assessed on, different across the year. But our cut scores change because we expect that kids are going to grow. So we aren't measuring the same endpoint as proficient that moves across the year. So what that graph is showing us on the left is walking into school, who has the fall expectations of grade-level proficiency met? And so 70, approximately 74% of our kindergartners come in in the sweet spot of having mastered those fall skill sets. 57% of our first graders are in, are meeting that target expectation of what we want them to know in the fall. And 67.5% of our second graders come in the door with meeting that fall expectation. So it kind of lands on our shoulders to say, all right, we have 74% of our kids who are meeting this. Now we have to keep pushing them. And so when we look at that growth, we are seeing that we are pushing kids to grow.
That's this year's data.
Correct.
Not just in general, it's this past fall.
This group of kindergartners in this school year, yes.
So would you also include that same chart for the winter or the spring testing?
We could. And I wanted to show you two separate charts so that, especially because the test in the fall is different than the test in the winter, comparing those in a bar chart next to each other, we really make some false assumptions. And so pairing what we had in the left with what is the growth, I think more easier, is an easier representation for our community to understand how children are growing in our classrooms. The, we had, at one point, had a stacked bar chart. And we talked about what might people take away from this? And what we recognized is that the perceptions from that were not matching what the intention was. So we wanted to rethink, how do we visually tell the story of how kids are growing?
So the test in the fall, you said, is the A-FAS. That's not, it's not the A-FAS in winter and spring?
It is. So in kindergarten, they do the FastBridge early reading. In the winter, it's a whole different set of skills that we test them on. Because in kindergarten in particular, we expect that they're changing how they are as readers. And so we can't just look right next to each other what the fall score is and what the spring score is. That's why on the right-hand side, when we see that growth, that we are then being able to clearly show how kids are progressing over the course of a school year.
Thank you for the work. Lot of information. And as I think about what you're presenting, I think, oh, we're a community elected board. We're all community members. And you're living in a space where you look at this all the time, you think about this all the time. And I think about the two questions that came from community members, because that's who we are, and the amount of explanation you've had to give us to understand that information. And wonder if you walk away with that and think about, well, how does that impact what we actually publish? Because if we, who have some experience with the data, not as much as you, but we still are community members, if we're walking away and looking at this and having these questions, as it's shared more widely, will the committee have those same questions? So I just hope you think about that and how that might impact the next revision.
Thank you. The other thing that I was thinking about, and I appreciate the opportunity to share, and I'm open up my mind and share, is that I think we, the message that I would like to share is that it isn't, and maybe this is going to sound bad, but it isn't necessary that everybody in our community understands the data as well as our teachers do. They have expertise that they use in order to make sense of this and make programming decisions. And I think one of the things that I want to be an ambassador of as I do these, and I certainly will continue to think about how do we share that visually, is that we need to really lean into the expertise that our teachers have and know they're in this and they're making sense of this. And they're making programming decisions because of the data that we collect. And it is super complex. And so when we try to take that on and think, oh, well, I need to know this so that I can help with this, we've got to trust those educators that they're doing it and communicate how we do that in a way that's, that makes sense. So I'll keep working on that.
I, I would agree with, the one on the right, to me, seems very clear. And it says down below, that shows the growth between the fall and the winter testing. The one on the left leaves more questions for me than answers because I, now my brain's going to, so why were 74% of kindergartners ready for the fall, but 57 first graders? Like, there's some whys that I don't really get, that I don't feel like it's making a lot of sense to me. So I guess I would have the same one. And that's why when you first shared this, I went to the right one. And on the left one, I was like, I feel like I need a little more explanation.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would tend to agree with you that we don't need to have a deep understanding as community members around the actual numbers themselves. But what we do need to have an understanding of is, are we making progress as a district, as a school, as a class, as a student, right? And it's really hard for me as a community member to understand if these percentages are good, are they bad? Are they getting better? Are they getting worse? How do we compare to other districts? And it is not an enviable task. So I appreciate you doing this because it's extremely hard to represent so many numbers in one spot. So I fully recognize that. But it's really hard to make sense of, you know, 80, 90, it sounds great, but I don't know, that, that might be really bad. I don't know. And so if there's any way we can try to feed more context into these numbers to understand how we're tracking as a district and as a school, I think that would be really helpful.
Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to move us along. So I, on the next page, we continue with our map level data and share at the middle school. Here, I shared a grade distribution for semester one, which at the middle school is a little bit tricky because we don't give semester one grades. So these really are quarter two grades across all of the content areas. And then I shared our fall NWEA map in reading and in math because they don't do a winter map. So there was no growth score to share in this particular publication. And then I also shared our attendance data. Unlike the elementary where the, the student body had such a significantly high attendance rate, it didn't make sense to dig into the economic-based gap. Here, there's just a larger student body that we could dig into. And I included that information. And then at the high school level, grade distribution, they do not do NWEA map, which is why it's not included on the bottom. And I included their attendance data as well as on track for graduation, which in collaborating with the high school counselors, it is about credits earned. And so we're not looking at students in their current grades. It is only about the credits that they've earned and are they on track for graduation? Questions or wonders or thoughts you have for me here?
Director Payne.
And we talked to our community about NWA data being growth data. But it tells us also where students are at that point in time. And so when you say percent meeting or exceeding target, is that growth targets? Or grade-level targets? So I'm not sure what that target is because if it's growth data, is it saying growth? Or, because I looked at those numbers differently, right?
Yes. So this, and thank you, in this particular data set, it is about meeting or exceeding grade-level target because we don't have, this isn't comparing fall to fall or spring to spring. The next iteration, I'll bring back some growth data and only growth data.
But if you're using the same instrument, that's going to be very confusing. So a clarification on which target are we after here? Grade-level reading, grade-level math, or growths?
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one other question about just the entire newsletter. As far as where do you plan to share this and how? I guess my follow-up to that would then be, because that might also change whose pictures or things are allowed in this, right? As far as student pictures. And so I'm just wondering, the audience, like, I, obviously, we are seeing it digitally because of the multimodal things. Is there, is that going to be, where is that going to go? And what does that look like?
Yeah, thank you. So we know that the, the first stop is to be able to share with the board because, like Superintendent Dufferin shared, as part of your board goals is to better understand the, the data in our schools and how we're doing. It can't just make this and put this much work in and just share it with you. So we've created an academic data page under the, the heading on our front page. And this will be added into there. And we'll be able to see historical references of all of these newsletters. So we'll put that up tomorrow, probably. All right, I'm moving on then. The last set of data is that satellite data that we've talked about. Is that one time per year? My audio up here describes that and explains the value to our satellite data. So we have our 2022 MCA scores. As you'll recall, our MCA data comes out in September for the public. And so at that point, we'll be able to amend our MCA scores. We've talked about the 2022 graduation rates. As I was building that, that data was not yet available. So the next iteration, we will share the graduation rates for 2022. I've included in here some pretty amazing statistics that are happening with our advanced coursework. I would really like to highlight two things. That we had 455 students enrolled in 676 different AP courses. So one student could be taking multiple AP courses. And I, the second one is fabulous. 220 students have earned 1,183 credits through college and the schools. This isn't, if the school accepts it, they have a transcript from either the University of Minnesota or Mankato State that says you have earned these college credits, not ever having to leave our campus because we offer those courses on site. And, and as context to those, at the bottom of the page I've shared, here are the current courses that are offered in our district. And I need to add, I have a link to a document that shares here all the courses available because there aren't AP courses in everything. AP is a, they have specific courses and there's approval needed on behalf of the teacher in order to offer an AP course. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see data that is also shared in the World's Best Workforce Report. And so we shared that in the same way, meeting the Minskew Benchmark.
So on the scholars, the AP scholars and scholars with honor and scholars with distinction, is there some place you can describe what those are?
And you were going to ask that, so I pulled it up. So we could, yeah, and we could link it. That might be, an AP scholar is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher in three or more AP exams. AP scholar with honor, an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then with distinction is with scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams.
And do we, is that an AP term or is that our?
Okay.
And I will wrap up on the final page. Again, going back to some feedback that we are running with, even though our action teams have not yet completed their work. In one of the teams, they talked about not only celebrating our students, but also taking an opportunity to celebrate the excellence of our staff. And so in this, in this particular newsletter, we're highlighting Deanna Lowey. She has been on the forefront of our Letters Professional Development. She and another colleague, Amanda Mahmoud, did the, the training with the Minnesota Department of Education prior to it, Letters Training coming to Wildwood. And she is trying to do everything within her power to implement everything that she's learning. And I think her, well, I know her students are benefiting from both her knowledge and her passion.
Director Domon.
Not necessary, but I'm going to call out, Deanna is a great person in the spotlight in the inaugural issue here. So great choice, she's incredible.
And then we wrapped up with just some language pieces. And then those four circles are linked to the school report cards on the Minnesota Department of Education website. So people can have access to additional information.
Great. Thanks.
All right, any last questions, comments, or feedback?
Oh, Director Donna.
But I heard tonight was certainly the appreciation for how hard it is to present data succinctly and make, make it meaningful. And then also the comments that, that we will gather and we'll hear from the community will help shape future.
Director Payne.
I like the fact that I, I hear my fellow board members and others, you know, on the US News and World Report piece, but you do a nice job describing that, but then going beyond that to show that we are more than just a single number and how important that is when you look at schools and children and classrooms. And so I really appreciate the work that's gone into this to look at things beyond a single number.
So just to circle back to, I think at the beginning, we talked about, or Dr. Eichel talked about it, maybe one of you, and I'm sorry, I can't remember who. The idea that what we want to do with this data also is to have study sessions using this so that you understand it better. So there'll be, there'll be this newsletter that's kind of a standing page. But we are going to continue to come back and talk about these same things with you so that you have a deeper understanding, again, with the goal of. Again, with the goal of you being able to speak to this data also and have that, that knowledge that you can, at the very least, talk about it, even if you don't know how to use it the way our staff does, you can at least speak to it, so that's part of our plan.
I also really appreciate in this, the qualitative and quantitative, and just the, you know, there's the hard numbers part of it, and then there's the personal touch to it. And that's what makes us who we are. I mean, I think I told the story at one of our last meetings that when my kids were, my first, my youngest, who's now twenty, we walked into like kindergarten, whatever that's called, bound up. I mean, my oldest, sorry, not my youngest, my oldest. When we walk, it was like how the district made us feel, so I feel like the cultural piece is present here as well. So I really like the human side of it and the data piece both, so thank you for all your work on this.
You. Okay, now we are back to action items. So I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of donations and grants for March twenty twenty-three totaling thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Moved by Director Domon.
Second.
Seconded by Director Regan. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And now we will move to item C. So here you have a couple of action items. Typically, we do a lot of our personnel items in the consent agenda, because they're just common, you know, just what happens during the school year. With the reason we do this a little bit differently is there is some statute related to needing to have a separate action item for teachers who are probationary. So as a, it's, it's our practice to do, to both ask you to approve our recommendation to approve contract status for licensed personnel moving from probationary to continuing contract status, and also to approve the resolution to terminate non-renewed probationary teaching contracts. So in all of these cases, this is the, the end of the school year, and all of our staff who are, are they go through our teacher evaluation process, or principal, all the, both with the principals, and we have peer coaching, and all of those processes have gone through, and these are the recommendations that are coming forward from our principals. And so I would ask, we'll have two different actions. First one is, I'm asking for you to approve this recommendation to move our probationary teachers to continue.
So moved. By Director Payne. Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.
Again, the second one, every year we have teachers who are non-renewed for a variety of reasons, including when we have changes in the number of courses that are being offered, it may be somebody who is a long-term substitute who's on, whose position is ending, and so though, these, these are something we do every year, and so I'm asking for your approval of the resolution to terminate and non-renewed probationary teaching contracts.
So moved.
Moved by Director Donna, do I have a second? Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, school board committee reports. Director Payne, could you give us the A M S D report?
A M S D met on the fourth. And as I mentioned, for table, for those of you who could attend, they, we had Representative Edelson and Bobby Burnham from talk to us about the REED Act and where that was. So we had that conversation, we went over the A M S D conference committee priorities, and our next meeting is coming up on. That's a, no, it is the fifth, I'm sorry, tomorrow's an executive meeting, it is the fifth, on May fifth, and so if you'd like to attend, that's great, I don't have an agenda yet, though, so I'm not sure what the topic is.
Great, thank you. Director Regan, a M A F report.
So first of all, before I give my M A F report, I just wanted to make sure to, on behalf of the board, to send our condolences to the Brunner family. So Ellie Brunner has recently passed away, and Ellie Brunner was the founder and president of the Wildwood Artist Series for over thirty years, and did many wonderful things for this community, not only the artist residency program, wonderful community events. And so Phil Brunner was the president of M A F as well, and so on behalf of the board, and anyone else who is listening out there, condolences to the Brunner family. As far as that M A F report, it's pretty brief. M A F met last on April seventeenth, and that meeting, a lot of it was really to talk about the success of the gala. So the gala took place on March thirty-first. There was really great turnout, they sold over, you know, two hundred and eighty-eight tickets from a hundred and seventy-five different households attended the gala. There, there was huge success for the fund to need, we see part of that right in front of us with the large yellow check over there. So it was a really well-attended event, a lot of positivity, a lot of great support for Moda Media Schools. So that, the meeting, a lot of that was really talking about the gala, and then just some dates upcoming for, to can put on maybe people's calendars for M A F. Or just to be aware of, I guess, one of these would be that we have Food Truck Fridays starting, and so M A F is gonna be volunteering there, I believe, at the Food Truck Fridays. It seems like it's actually gonna, maybe it will get nice out, and it'll be nice for Food Truck Friday, so. So that's May fifth, I believe, is the first one, am I right on that date? Okay, so May fifth, and then also the class of twenty twenty-three, I'm sure they're counting down the days, right? Kaya, I have no idea how many days are left, but, so. How many? Twenty-nine. Oh. She's not counting, you know. So M A F is a, is it once again sponsoring the class of twenty twenty-three graduate signs? So you're gonna see those all over the, the community, and I personally absolutely love that when I walk around the community and get to see who's graduating, just like M A F sponsored the kindergarten signs or this fall as well. So the class of twenty twenty-three signs are coming out, and that's it, I have, oh, and the thanks a latte was already mentioned earlier, so for teacher appreciation week. And if you want to donate to that, they're looking for people to do that, so, questions about me?
I just wanna add on, I'm on the Wildwood Artist Series Board, the Wildwood Artist Series Board this year renamed the Artist in Residency, the Ellie Brunner Artist in Residency, and there is a fun drive right now happening through M A F to support that program in her name. So those of you who've worked with Ellie and, and knew her well and her family, it's a nice way to acknowledge her work that she's done in our community.
Next, an M S B A report. I do wanna point out that a lot of this is focused on the legislative items happening, they're, they're in the final month of the legislative season. M S B A Friday Chat is tomorrow at nine, and they will be going through the labor bills, specifically the terms and conditions and unemployment language, which we will be affected by that, so I encourage you to attend to get more details on that. Other bills that I think are we're seeing a lot of movement is the General Education Formula Fund Bill that is going to conference all three. The House, Senate, and the Governor's Proposal had four percent for the first year, and then they differed on the second year, the House was two percent with inflation a, a potential there, and then the Senate was five percent in that second year, and then the Governor's Proposal again was the two percent with the indexes to the formula to inflation. So my guess is, I think we're in good, a good place, because if you'll recall, Jeff built our budget on four and two. And my guess is, it, they won't go above that, they won't go, because they're going into conference, they have to work with the language that's been passed in each body. So I'm guessing that we're in a good spot, because we're at four, and then whatever that next number will be, whether it'll be tied with inflation or not, I don't know. But I think, you know, it's, it's better than one and two, or whatever it's been in the past. So special education cross subsidy that also is going to the conference committee. All of the, the two, the bills that passed the House and Senate and the Governor's Proposal were all around forty-seven or forty-eight percent. So it's not really what we want, but that's probably where it's going to end up. And then the REED Act, there, it has bipartisan support for the funding, there are some variations on it, so I just will say it is going to conference committee, so I, I think we will see something passed into law. Did anyone wanna add anything? Yes.
So you saw the conference committee was announced today, and one of our senate representatives, or ever since our district is on the conference committee.
Oh, great, no, I just said I didn't see if the conference had been announced, okay, great, great.
Which, which senator of ours, Justinson?
Good. Okay, that means she'll want to hear from us. Yes, exactly, exactly. Um, and next is, oh, back to Director Payne for the nine sixteen met board.
Nine sixteen met on April fifth, the next meeting is on May third. At our meeting, we have two presentations on the national conferences, COSPA and N S B A. We had board members representing nine sixteen attend those two meetings, and so it was good to hear what they learned at those conferences. We, of course, as I had told you at the site session, we had to update the school calendar, because they do not have evening days, and so we updated the school calendar for nine sixteen district, and we approved next year's calendar. We worked with our L T F M and approved that coming forward, so it'll be coming to us shortly as a district, and we renewed the recycling program within the district.
Other board reports, Director Regan.
I have district curriculum advisory, so that group met for the last time for the school year on Thursday, April sixth, and to review new courses and topics that that group, the curriculum advisory, has provided feedback over the past year. We learned about some of the new courses that were offered this year, and those that students have registered for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Some of those I just wanted to call out that there's a lot of interest in is the personal finance that was added to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in the registration guide, and three classes were offered semester one and two, semester two. So a lot of different offerings here, electronics to robotics, automation and mechantronics. Gosh, I don't even know what that means, but mechantronics. And so that was run as a capstone experience, along with another engineering course. Sort of like an independent study, if I recall, Dr. Eichel, that's like.
That if students work in another course, it's mechanronics. The, one of our engineering teachers, if it's in that engineer, I think, at our showcase, there were some students from that course in this.
Some other courses that there's some interest in, some high interest of intro to business, C I S literature, C I S intro to public speaking, that one right at this point, I think has not been approved by the U of M, that was part of the discussion. But a lot of different offerings that it's really great to see all the different things that are being offered to the students. And the last part of the meeting, the group got an update on the progress the district is making around dyslexia and achievement and integration, and I believe there's a new landing page on the website for that as well. And then we got to hear a little bit about Avid and the new teaching and learning newsletter that we got to spend some time looking at. So we got kind of a preview of what that might be, so it was a great meeting, it's our last one for the year. And at this point, I think there's, was a Google form that went out for people who are interested for next year and when those meetings might take place, so that's curriculum advisory.
Other board reports. Director Payne.
If the Intelligent Committee met on April eighteenth, our next meeting will be in the fall, that's our last meeting of the year as well. It was a really great night, because we were welcoming new second grade families for students who had just been identified through our process. And so the meeting was very nicely done in terms of flexibility, we did our usual building updates, but then we had adjusted the agenda a little bit to address the questions and answers that were requested from our new families. And so we spent time on identification and the vision of the program, and then also allowed for that parent voice, which is so important about the glows and the grows that happen within our district. So, very well done, thank you, Dr. Eichel.
Other board reports. Doc, our Director Peterson.
Community Ed met on April eleventh, and the brochure is out for spring and summer, grab whatever you wanna do with your kids or yourself. Community Ed really needs a piano teacher, if any of you know someone looking to give piano lessons to add to their schedule, or they wanna just work here, please reach out to Kate. Uh, Kelly did mention Food Truck Fridays next Friday out here in the parking lot. And then, this is neat, the, if you are Native American, you're a senior graduating this year, there is a powwow in White Bear Lake on Saturday, next Saturday, sixth. Um.
No, it's, it's going to be in White Bear Lake, we had to move it.
Okay.
Because of the numbers.
Wednesday, May seventeenth, is the all-community luncheon here in this building, and the local family, the Kirkwoods, will be catering it with their barbecue. And then the vehicle fair is in the middle of the month, on Thursday, the eighteenth, all the big trucks and businesses around will be out in the parking lot for kids to look in and play.
Any other reports? Right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. By Director Regan. Seconded by Director Peterson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.